Do you want to go, Tim? Try to go. Tim?
Yep.
Uh, do you want me to continue?
Yep, we're ready when you are.
Okay. Uh, as it is, I'll open the Monday, March 30th, 2020, um, meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectment. Um, and I'll go down by agenda numbers here. Uh, but I think we do want to go into executive session to, uh, to talk, there's a couple of issues, uh, personnel issues, uh, that we need to talk about, uh, have arisen today, Tim, that I think we need to address.
Okay.
Okay, um, I realize that it's out, but it's, uh, something that's come up within the last forty-eight hours. Um, so I, I'll start out with item number one, which is the Old Colony Regional Voke, um, oh, twenty twenty-one, um, issue that has come up this week, um, in relation to the fact that, though we had kind of no, uh, communications from Old Colony, apparently they have not accepted, as of now, any freshmen, uh, for, uh, the next school year from the town of Free Town. Um, and so I'll let David do a little bit of explanation, so that we all hear somebody else besides me talking, because I don't think you're really hearing a lot of me.
Uh, I don't honestly have a lot to offer on this, other than the fact that I am aware that they had not accepted any freshmen for the FY twenty-one school year, and, uh, I have not had any contact with the superintendent. Uh, however, that is on my agenda for the next day, uh, tomorrow probably. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this situation. Uh, we to date have not received any communication from them as to the reason why. Um, but, uh, what I can do is I can, uh, uh, initiate some discussions with them and see what the issues are and get back to the board, uh, with some kind of a, a plan in terms of what they're looking at and how we can resolve it.
So, um, I think what they're looking at is for us to join.
Oh, I think that that's true, yeah.
So, um, I think that this is kind of like, uh, holding children and students who are interested in going to Old Colony hostage. Um, I think that anything you say or do with him should be in writing, so we have backup on that. Um, just so there's no misinterpretation about what's going on. And, um, we can go from there once we know what they're saying. But, um, to have no communication about this and for me to find out through, um, the Free Town Lakeville Superintendent is just unacceptable.
Yep. Well, we had gotten, the only reason we knew is that we had gotten, uh, an email from a parent, uh, that had come in through, uh, the website. That's the way we learned about it. So.
George, do you have any input?
No, not until I find out why and how all this came about.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just want to remind everyone, um, that, as, you know, we all know, we haven't got any communications. I'm just wondering if they are withholding, uh, the acceptance of students to, um, you know, make a movement, but I, I checked their minutes. They, uh, from some of their, uh, previous meetings, the, the Old Colony School Committee meetings, and there's nothing in there, though there's nothing for the last two months. Uh, but before that, that had anything that they had voted on not accepting students or anything like that. So it is a curious, uh, situation, and as David said, he's gonna try to start to look into it. Uh, there's nothing else, uh, no one else has any input. We'll just direct David to, uh, uh, look into it, um, more, uh, deeply.
I have had a, oh, I'm sorry. I have had a good, wow, working relationship with Aaron Polanski, who is the superintendent, up to this point. So I'm sure Aaron will give me the full scoop as to what the intent and purpose of, uh, of, uh, withholding admission to the Free Town kids is, so.
I, I, I want to form a letter to go to him. I don't want you to call him up on the phone. Like I said, I'm all in writing, because, you know, a good relationship would mean that he would call you and give you a heads up on this.
Hmm. Okay.
I would go a step further and invite him to our next meeting.
Uh, well, i- if I may, um, I don't know what, you know, what control he has. So I, I, I would agree with David that probably everything we should do, we should at least do through writing. If there's, um, other communications, um, after that initial writing, I'm, I'm willing to work on this as much as we can, get the issue at least before the townspeople. That's what, uh, they are, uh, trying to do. But I, I do wish that we had had a set of communications. I don't think that they have communicated very well with us at all. But, um, so do I hear a motion to, uh, oh, close out this item, a directive to David?
I'll make a motion to have David, um, send a written letter, um, to the Superintendent of Schools of Old Colony for an explanation on why no freshmen are allowed to go to Old Colony at this time.
Would an email suffice, or do you want it in a formal letter? We'll get a faster response with an email and then a letter if you're doing snail mail.
Well, you, you can attach the letter and then.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Hey, uh, motion made and seconded, um, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
And the next item is to review all articles submitted.
Excuse me, uh, I did want to add to that, that we should invite him to one of our meetings to discuss this, how this happened and why it happened. I mean, the letter is fine. I think we should do that. I just wrote a, a on that. But I, I really would like to invite him to one of our meetings, to the next meeting, to see what he has to say.
Well, I concur with that, uh, George, in that there certainly should be a dialogue. I think maybe that, but to Lisa's motion, I think the first step is to get some, uh, written, uh, oh, idea from him of what is going on. If, in fact, if in fact it really is what we, uh, perceive as going on is actually going on. Um, you know, we don't know.
How about this? In the letter, as part of the letter, invite him to our meeting.
That sounds fine. Is that all right with you, Lisa?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, all right, David, did you get that? Okay, fine, thank you. Item number two is to review all articles submitted for annual town meeting and potential special town meeting. Um, in the packet, there were, um, oh, the rundown of the different articles have been presented. Um, what's your pleasure on this?
Uh, I, I did not receive the package, I'm sorry. Uh, Tim did send me a text or an email that he would drop it off for me.
No, that was your budget book, George.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was the articles also.
The draft warrant is in the, the meeting packet for this meeting.
That was in the meeting packet?
Yes.
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 Okay, oh, well, all right, okay, all right.
So I guess my question would be, Tim, you're just looking for us to send these articles for review? You're not asking us to vote, or Charlie, you're not asking us to vote on these, correct?
No, I'm not.
Okay, the only one that I would withdraw would be the one for Copacott Road.
Um, I, I would tend to concur, Lisa. Um, do you think it would be better, though, to send it for review and then come back? Because there's some other articles on the warrant that probably, uh, seeing where the situation we are presently in, you may want to, uh, remove also, um, but.
There's a lot of articles I want to remove.
Well, I guess, do we want to have council, uh, reviewing things that potentially could be removed? I guess that it might be more advantageous to have a review. Say, these are the arti- probably in a meeting, next meeting, um, have a review of the article. Say, this one is on, this one's off. And additionally, add any articles that we think at this point might be relative to the situation that we're in. I'm not sure what those articles might be, but at least, uh, you know, begin the discussion. Because we don't want to spend money on council to review articles that won't end up on the warrant.
Okay, good point, I think, uh, would, uh, we be of the, would it be a good idea to us review the articles? I don't have them, I, you know, I have them here on the iPad in the packet, but I can't get to them. We can stick to them now. I was wondering if, why don't we all, um, we go over the articles, put our comments on them, uh, and then, uh, next week, uh, speak of the articles, whether we want to remove them or not. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's fine. Is that gonna interfere with the timeline, Tim?
Uh, no, it's not. Next week's that meeting was actually going to be nothing, because it was, uh, supposed to be the first meeting after the election. But since the election's not next week, we can have a regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it sort of works, so.
Okay.
All right, all right, George, uh, you guys, you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, all right, uh, uh, item three, potential reopening of warrant for articles submitted by the, uh, Board of Assessors, Water Commissioners, Painting Board, Board of Health and Building Department. Uh, do we want to, uh, Tim, are there articles that did not make the warrant that some people would like to see on that warrant?
That's correct.
Might be helpful just to include those with the next week's agenda and do it all in one shot.
Sounds good.
Yes, and, go ahead.
Yeah.
And could you put the, um, the, uh, six hundred and fifteen or six hundred and five thousand dollar, um, article back on?
I can, yep.
For discussion?
Certainly.
For repurpose?
Perfect.
All right, um, next, uh, item is, uh, budget meetings, uh, scheduled for, uh, uh, April thirteenth and twenty-seventh to review the various budgets.
Okay.
Uh, any input on that?
Uh, I, I don't know. Do you want me to take this, Lisa, or?
Yeah, you can, you can. I'll tell you.
Okay, um, I have called, uh, a meeting of, uh, the finance team for tomorrow, uh, at two P M. Uh, I want to talk about implementing a spending freeze on all capital projects and other ordinary expenses, uh, that are currently before, uh, the town, as well as a hiring freeze. I'm gonna recommend, uh, as far as the budgets, um, and are, uh, currently in the form that they are, that maybe we revert back to the FY, uh, twenty budget as the, the baseline, uh, but including, uh, the collective bargaining agreements that we're obligated to legally. And then maybe in the fall, do a second review, uh, when we're in a better shape. All of this is predicated on currently what's going on. And I guess the, the thing that I'm driving at is that, um, we're gonna develop a cash flow, uh, to, uh, for the upcoming months, uh, to determine what, how much we're gonna adjust our revenue uh, and our expenses based upon potential drops in receipts, uh, that are gonna be caused by the virus. As, as the board is aware, uh, there are a number of residents that pay their mortgage through their bank, and the bank requires that money be held in escrow and paid to the town. Um, and if people are now deferring payments, because the banks, because of the situation, people have lost jobs, and the banks are giving two and three months of deferment, where people can actually just say, no, I can't afford to make that payment, I'm out of work. Uh, that's gonna potentially impact us, because we're not gonna be getting those revenues in. So I think at this point, I think we need to do a little bit of a snapshot, see where we are currently, what we forecast out as our potential revenues and our potential expenses, and start taking a look at, you know, uh, and how we're gonna approach the problem. And one of the things might be, um, the repurposing of that money that Lisa had previously mentioned for, uh, other issues. The other thing that I want to take a look at is not, oh, I want to increase the FY twenty-one, uh, unemployment budget, because we don't know what, how this is all gonna sort itself out. But I just want us to be prepared in the event that, uh, if, if worst case scenario, and I'm not advocating this at this point, because we don't know where we're headed, but just have that money in the budget and potentially, if it happens sooner rather than later, uh, potentially looking at a, um, FY twenty, uh, reserve fund transfer if we need to do that. So, you know, I'm not advocating any layoffs, I'm not advocate, but we don't know. We're kind of in, we're in uncharted waters at this point. I guess that's the best way to put it. And we want to make sure that we at least know our course and know where we're headed in terms of our revenue and where we're headed in terms of our expenses, and at least be able to, to plan out how we're gonna deal with some of the issues that may come up as a result of the financial situation that we're currently in, along with the state and the federal government.
So in trying to wrap my head around looking at all the budgets today and the warrant articles, um, I was on the phone with, um, Rep Schmidt, because he called about some stuff. And I asked him, like, when do you think we're gonna get the state budget? Like, what are you looking at? He said, cut. He said, he, they don't know when they're gonna have the state budget ready. They don't know, you know, what they owe, what, what they're gonna give us, like, so, um, he just said tread lightly and tread cautiously. So David and I had that discussion this morning, and that's, that's where we're at.
Uh, I would agree with that. Uh, any input, George?
Well, I, I mean, my recommendation right now, this might be premature, but I would, uh, keep the budget flat from this year to next year until we know what we're doing.
That's exactly what we, that's the plan, exactly.
Right.
That's what I was trying to communicate. Maybe I was a little bit too verbose.
No, you're fine.
I, I said it went on a little bit, but.
Uh.
No, I think we're all nervous. I think we're all nervous. Like, we're in such a good place, and now, you know, we're not.
All right, um, item number four, uh, George wanted to put on, uh, the use of town issued phone, uh, by the highway surveyor. Uh, George, I'll let you, uh, speak now, if you would.
Sure, uh, you know, the surveyor is on the payroll, he's getting paid. I understand all the things that are going on, but I, I real feel that he should be doing his job. And if it requires a phone, which it always has, uh, he should have a phone. Now, if we don't want to give him a phone, maybe we should offer to pay for him to get a phone or pay for his phone, or whatever the issue is, uh, or another, uh, way to do it is if he uses the phone and abuses the privilege and he runs up charges, that maybe we can deduct that from his pay. But at any rate, having said all of that, uh, I, I don't understand why we don't let the guy do his job. What we put in place is, is ridiculous.
The issue that the board had initially discussed was relative to his using the phone to talk to employees at the highway department. And, uh, one of the reasons was, you know, the, the situation that had been, um, uh, you know, relative to the, you know, uh, I'm trying to think of the word. The, the key is, we wanted to minimize contact between him and the individual employees. Now, given that, I think that there is a need for him to have a phone to contact me or to contact Eric, or as a means for him to, uh, for example, uh, on days when there's nobody at the town hall, to be able to use the phone to scan in the day's work assignment and send it to Eric. You know, you can do that on a phone very simply. Right now, he is coming into town hall, he's dropping that off, we're scanning it and then sending it over to Eric. It can be done right off the phone with a scanning program. So there are benefits to him having the phone, but, once again, I think the issue is, the greater issue is that we don't want, uh, well, I don't say we don't want it. The intent was not to have him talking to individual employees.
And, and that was because of the court case?
Uh, well, y- y- yeah, I guess. Well, I don't know if you, I, you know, I don't, yeah.
You gotta be careful.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, there are, yeah, maybe this should be discussed in, uh, in a closed meeting. If that's, if this is an issue, uh, that we can't really discuss openly.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
I think David can explain that to you tomorrow on the phone or tonight on the phone. Or, I don't, I don't think we need to have an executive session, but this is, I don't want to go back to where we were with that situation. So I would make a motion to allow Chuck to have his phone for the purpose of contacting David, Eric, and scanning work into, um, it, into the town hall or into whoever it has to be. Um, and that if the abuse of the phone, um, you know, if there's an abuse of that situation or the phone, then I say that we shut it off.
I have a question.
I do feel he should have his phone. I felt it even during snowplowing. But I just don't want him, I don't want to go down the road where we were that we just got out of.
All right, I, I have a question for David. Do you, can you speak to Chuck and then, uh, speak to Eric? Is that possible?
Jeff, the way I communicate now with Chuck is, um, I don't communicate by phone. What I do is I email Mike McQ, or I email Chuck, because, uh, Chuck has an email. However, Mike McQ is the individual who receives all of Chuck's emails. Chuck, then.
Can I interrupt just for a minute?
Okay.
Can I ask you why you don't speak to him directly?
Because he doesn't, he doesn't have a phone. They, you know, that, that's sort of the crux of the problem.
So if he has a phone, you could talk to him directly?
I would say yes, yes.
You haven't talked to him directly at all recently?
Abs- no, what I do, I, I started to explain to you the process. Is that I contact Mike, Mike contacts Chuck, Chuck contacts Mike back, and then Mike, uh, will email me back with a response.
It, it's really convoluted.
No, well, hold on.
Is there a reason you can't talk to him directly? Is there any reason?
I try, I have to, don't get me wrong in terms of, I have actually, in the hallway, have talked to Chuck. In, in, when we talked about the scheduling and all of that, Chuck came into my office and we had a discussion. You know, I, I, it's not like this, there's no animosity between Chuck and I. Uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm always open. If Chuck wanted to call me, he knows my phone number, he'd be able to call me on my phone. He does have a personal phone. I did, I haven't called him on his personal line, because it is his personal line. It's not the tele, it's not the town's phone.
So if he has it, if he has a phone, then you could and you would communicate with him directly.
I would have no problem communicating. Once again, I, you know, there's, you know, there's no animosity between Chuck and I. Uh, you know, I need to be able to talk to Chuck. Chuck needs to be able to talk to me in order to get our jobs done. So, and, and Eric needs to be able, as a new, as a working foreman, needs to be able to take direction from, uh, Chuck in terms of getting the work tasks and things like that, so.
Lisa, Charlie, do you have any issues with this?
No, I made a motion. So Mike, Mike, go ahead, Charlie, you go first.
Well, I, 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 I realize it is a convoluted, um, situation here. But if I remember, it was developed basically by Chuck or the highway department, because, um, Mike basically, not, not, I, I shouldn't say got in the middle, but ended up being the, uh, oh, a bridge between the two. Um, the, the, the thing that I, um, have a problem here is that we have this situation where if the person was not an elected official, he'd be on administrative leave and probably, and most likely without pay. He's getting his pay, um, uh, the advice of our attorney was to, uh, keep him basically from the property and property from him, uh, as much as possible. And I wonder if, you know, the issue is over town property and him having town property, um, that it, it just has a bad, a bad, um, oh, I don't know, I, I wouldn't say, it, it just seems bad to me that we're doing this. I mean, I, I realize that things have changed a little bit than our, our original discussion, but I still have a little bit of a problem with, this is the first thing, then it will be the truck, then it will be something else. And, uh, I, I, I see you shake your head, Lisa, but, you know, but we say that, but we know that that will come. And I, that's, that's my issue, you know. I, I don't want to, guys, I don't want to end up, uh, the butt of some, uh, columnist's, uh, column, because as was ha- as has happened in Fall River, it had a convoluted issue with, uh, the recall. That's, that's my big issue, I guess. I don't want to be, uh, I want to be doing as much as we can to protect the town's property. That's, that's my feeling.
Okay, Tim.
My motion was to allow Chuck, and I hear you, Charlie, and, and pardon me, agrees with you, because it's gonna start to escalate, right? That's not what I'm looking for. It was hard during the winter, during the snowstorms, and it's hard for David. So, look, I, I always say, like, if he abuses it, we have the power to shut it off. If we start looking at the charges or we start looking at who he's calling, and he's calling everybody, no, we shut it off. The only people that he can be in contact with is Mike McQ, David, and Eric. That's it.
All right, uh, then I guess my, my question would be, at what point, who are, who's going to oversee this to make sure that that's not happening? That, that would be, um, my question. And, yeah, how, how will we go about that? David, do you have any?
Administrative issue that David can handle.
All right, and, and if it, at what point do we, uh, oh, pull this privilege?
Okay, let's do it for two weeks. If it doesn't work for the next two weeks, then we pull it back.
All right, um, all right, I, I'll go along with that. Um, Lisa, would you just re-verbalize your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, give Chuck his phone in order to contact Mike McQ, the town administrator, and Eric for the next two weeks, and we'll review this again in two weeks.
All right, do I hear a second?
I, I think, this is might be small, but I think a thirty-day period might be more appropriate than just two weeks, Lisa. Just so that we have a, you know, a little more to look at. Would you be okay with that? I mean, I'll go along with three if you want.
Thirty days. So, by, what is this, March, what, thirty-first?
March thirtieth, March thirtieth.
All right.
So all of April.
Yep.
Okay, all right, uh, motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Charlie, you'll still be here.
Yeah. Much to some people's chagrin, but, but whatever. All right, uh, item number six, reserve fund transfer.
I'm sorry, could I just ask Tim to send me a copy of the letter from the attorneys regarding all this?
I'll have David get in touch with you about the whole situation, if that works for you.
You don't have the letter from the attorney?
Uh, I, I don't personally, but David might, I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly which attorney you're referring to.
I don't know which, what, what, which, what are you referring to, George?
Uh, Charlie mentioned that to recommend, that the legal recommendation was to do all this. I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Well, I, ju- just so everyone knows, I remember having a personal discussion.
Yeah, I don't know if it ever ended up being a written, uh.
I, I, but it was from Ma- Mark Rich, uh, that, the, that, uh, recommendation was made. And I believe it was in a letter, but that was, uh, Mark Rich's recommendation, uh, in discussion.
So there's no, can't get a copy of the letter?
We're not saying that.
We're not saying, we don't. Not saying, we don't, we, we, we'd have to go, now we're talking something that happened almost a year ago. And I, I think that, you know, we'd have to, there, I wanna say that there are actually two attorneys that were involved. There was a, an attorney, John, was it John or? He was handling the situation, uh, in, instead of Joe Fair. He was another labor counsel.
Yeah, but there must be a file on Chuck for this, right?
Probably within the, um, executive session minutes from last year.
Okay. We'll give you whatever we have, there's no problem with that.
All right, because, you know, a lot of, we're making a lot of statements, and I'd just like to see the backup for, since.
Well, well, it, it's my recollection, that's my recollection. And the other, the other attorney, his first name I remember as being Jonathan David. I don't remember his last. But that was, that was the recommendation, you heard it at the time, George, uh, and you concurred with it. All right, moving on to, uh, yes, you did, all right. Uh, moving on to, uh, oh, uh. Item number six, reserve fund transfer for legal expenses. Uh, the amount to be transferred is sixteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents.
I'd like to see a copy of the invoice before I vote on that.
Uh, what do you mean by the invoice?
Uh, the invoice, I mean, if we owe them sixteen thousand dollars, they've billed us.
No, that we, we, they billed us out, um. Eight sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We have an ending balance of fifty-seven thousand three eighteen. Uh, where, I, I have the averages at work, I don't have them here. But we're averaging, if I'm just taking a quick snapshot of this, probably, you know. Uh, how many months we got? One, two, three, four, five, six. We're halfway through the year, we're, we're, we're averaging probably fifteen or sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a month. And, and those are ballpark. I, I have, like I said, I, I have the documentation at work, I don't have it here.
But this is part of the budget? We, these are budgeted numbers?
We budgeted, we budgeted, um, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
And how much have we spent?
Uh, we've spent a total of fifty-seven, I'm sorry, sixty, sixty-seven, six eighty-eight.
So this is in the budget already, right?
Yes.
All this information is on that legal request form that's in before the board right?
It's, it's the one below it.
I don't have it in front of me.
So, all right.
My question, my, my question is really simple. If it's in the budget, why do we have to vote on it?
We're, we're looking at a, probably a shortfall. That sixteen thousand dollar figure is gone, is an estimated amount of what we would need.
To finish up the year.
So, above the budget?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm trying to establish. If it's above budget, uh. You know, I mean, the question always comes up, why would we be above up, why are we above budget? And, uh, like to know what drives these things so that we can budget appropriately next year.
I think we have a pretty good handle on, on the situation in terms of what we think dri- is driving that budget.
I don't.
Right, well, George, one thing.
Offline about that.
Uh, yeah, just so we, we have four cases that, uh.
Pretty much, yeah.
That, uh. The deductibles are going to be, uh. At least thirty thousand dollars right there. All right, um, so.
Oh, it's a documentation.
Okay, so just, can you leave this on the agenda for the next meeting, please? Thank you.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Are you taking care of that?
Yep, I will.
All right, moving on to item number seven, Clarky's Memorial Enduro Event scheduled for May twenty-four, twenty twenty. Um, this is a reoccurring, uh, event. We had a, uh, a discussion about it last, uh, year. Uh, they're asking for May twenty-fourth, uh, date. Anyone have any, uh, oh, what, issue or wanna have any discussion?
Yes, uh, May twenty-fourth is too early. We don't know where we're going wi- with this right now. We've already had a bike race, um, postponed until, um. That's coming up that we voted on. Um, I think we send it back to them. And, um, tell them to pick another date because I think we're not gonna be out of the woods with COVID nineteen at that point. And it would be illegal for us to have post anything with people, um, in a big group like that. So I'm not gonna make a motion to approve at this point. You can send it back to them and ask them if they wanna revisit another date and another time, but, um. To, to, we're not supposed to have large groups, so.
Yeah, anything greater than ten people, they're saying that's gonna continue probably, probably all the way through June.
All right, George, any input?
No, no, that's fine.
Um, I would, uh.
What, that is a motion?
Yes, you, you could make that motion.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, um, contact Clarky's Memorial, um, to revisit their, uh, date. Um, and if they're held to the five twenty-four, I'll make a motion to not approve that date due to the current situation in the state of Massachusetts.
A motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Your motion made and seconded, all in favor? Uh, item number six, uh, date change for the Patriot Half Triathlon, which was, uh, scheduled for June twentieth. And they went to, uh, reschedule for September fifth. And just a note, so everyone's aware, September fifth is the Saturday of Labor Day weekend.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, item number ten is, uh, ambulance abatements and write-offs for February. Uh, allowances for the month are seven, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. And write-offs, uh, fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. For a total of ninety-four thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thirty-eight.
Excuse me?
Thirty-eight. Six, thirty-eight.
Okay, I, I thought I read that, but if I read something else, that's all right. All right, um. Okay, motion made to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, item number ten is agreement with Good Energy for Electrical Aggregate. Uh, Aggregation Program Consulting. Uh, this is a renewable contract we renewed, uh, several times. Any discussion?
I can, uh, do you want a little background? Um, we did have a conference call last week, uh, with all the twenty-two members, communities. Uh, they had planned, uh, to put the bid out on April twenty-first. Um, and they're still intending to do that. Previously, what they've done is they put the bid out. Um, and it was all done at, at the hotel in, uh, Taunton. And, uh, all of participating communities would actually physically attend that. And then sign off, uh, for their respective communities. Um, they're not going to do that. Uh, because of the COVID nineteen, everything's gonna be done online, and it's gonna be, um, digitally signed. Uh, I just wanna say that, you know, the program has been successful for the town. For the twenty-two communities, they've saved over a million dollars in, uh, in energy costs. The ever-source, uh, current rate is, uh, twelve and a half cents. For those participating in the Good Energy Program, uh, it's ten, ten point, uh, well, it's ten point four cents. So there's a two cent savings. Once again, they can't guarantee that that's gonna continue. But one of the reasons that they're pushing to get it done now is that they see the marketplace as being. Um, uh, advantageous at this point to trying, they're basically booking contracts into the future. And, uh, different energy companies, um, uh, provide quotes. Uh, based upon the different needs, the aggregation of all of those twenty-two communities and the potential use, and then they bid on that. So, uh, what they're asking for is, number one, they, they're asking to extend their contract by. They had said twenty-two to thirty-six months, it'll depend upon what the numbers end up being. Um, of course, we can't enter a contract greater than three years without having town meeting approval, so that fits within that thing. The second part is that electrical aggregation is exempt under thirty-two B, so it, it's a competitive environment still. And they coordinate that activity. And finally, um, when they make that bid. Uh, on the twenty-first, they need, uh, someone to sign it, so I would be looking for the board to authorize me to sign that contract. Uh, when it's awarded on the award date, on four twenty-one twenty. And once again, the, the, the other thing too is that there's, the, once the new contract is, is issued. Um, they have this certain opt-in and opt-out where people are given the opportunity, the people that have, you know, didn't participate in the program. Previously would have the opportunity to opt in, and those that did would have the opportunity to op- op- opt out, which I don't know why they would do that. Um, uh, and all of that's done through, uh, uh, communications, uh, by the company to the individual customers. We're not involved in any of that. It's, it's a good program, bottom line.
Uh, any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve and to have David be the signator, um, with the contract.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, next item is item eleven, outstanding minutes for meetings of the Board of Selectmen. Um, Tim didn't have the specific dates on the, uh, agenda, but I believe he does have them. Um, Tim, what are the specific dates?
Uh, just bear with me a moment, I'm opening up the packet here. I have February eighteenth, March fifth, March ninth, and March sixteenth.
Okay, um, is there any discussion or, uh, questions? I'll entertain a, a motion.
Motion to accept minutes?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Um, just a minute, uh, all right, item number twelve, uh, Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, um, I, I, I don't know, Lisa, do you want me to address the one-eleven F issue, or do you wanna give, uh? We had a conversation this morning with, um, the police and fire unions relative to their concerns. About, uh, the COVID nineteen virus and, um, one-eleven F. And we discussed, um, uh, their concerns about the. How, what, what coverage we be providing them with in the event that one of their members should, uh, be infected by the virus. And, uh, the, the bottom line is that we're, we reassure them that the town would, uh, provide, uh, coverage for them. Uh, we do have an insurance policy in place, uh, that provides coverage. The main factor there would be. Um, the presumption of whether or not they incurred that on duty or not on duty. Uh, and the, uh, whether the, the claim would be honored. But I think outside of that, there's, there's a couple other things, there are a couple other moving parts here. One is that the legislature is currently, uh, has several bills before it that are gonna specifically address this. Uh, this issue, uh, directly. So the feeling was that let's let the legislature, uh, do their thing. And, uh, hopefully they'll come up with some kind of a solution that will be beneficial to both the employees, our public safety employees and the town. And finally, we reassure them about the, you know, the fact that, you know, they're not going to have to use their sick time. Or their vacation time in the event that they should have to, uh, be infected or, uh, go into quarantine over this. So, at this point, uh, I think they, they're happy with that. And, uh, and we're gonna obviously touch base with them again when we have a firmer understanding as to what the legislation will be. And, uh, how it's gonna impact them and impact us. And, um, do you have anything else you wanna add, or?
No.
Yeah, I, I would just agree with you that, uh, we should wait for the legislation, that might be very helpful.
I think, I, it was, it was, it was a productive conversation because I, I know that they, uh. Were concerned, they have a legitimate concern, actually, uh, given, you know, the, the type of work that they do. And, and there's a reassurance on the part of the town that, you know, we are going to provide for them. You know, and they're, you know, there are, there are frontline, uh, people, you know, we have an obligation to take care of them. And, and we reassure them that we would make, uh, those provisions, uh, for them in the event that one of them. Or several of them, uh, should contract or be placed in quarantine as a result of the COVID nineteen virus.
Will this also cover anyone else besides fire and, uh, police?
No, actually, we did it, we did receive, uh, word from our insurer regarding workers' comp for the other employees. And they have informed us, the, the, the thing about the police policy on the one-eleven F. Is that it has a specific passage that addresses contagious diseases. Um, for regular employees, it would normally be, if it was somebody who was injured on duty, it would be a workers' comp claim. However, our workers' comp insurance doesn't cover, uh, exposure to contagions or contagious, uh. Um, s- uh, situation. So as a result, they have already informed us. That they're not gonna provide coverage for workers' comp for the general employees.
What about, uh, someone say like the water department that does go out to different, uh, sites?
The, the, the benefit here is, the, the thing with the Families First Act, it's, it goes into effect, uh, April first. Um, the Massachusetts, this is a, a law that's specific to Massachusetts. Uh, the Families First is paid for in part by, uh, uh, deduction, uh, from the employee's pay. It's like a tiny, tiny amount, and it's also, uh, paid for by, uh, the town. And there's a general pool that the money is put into. And the purpose of it is, is to provide. A, a safety net to every employee, not only town employees, but Walmart employees. And every single employee that i- is working in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has that safety net that they have eighty hours. Of time that they can use for themselves when they're sick, or when a family member is sick in that kinda situation. So it's a safety net that not, is not specific to COVID, but in general. If so, you know, like if you, uh, I'm, I'm trying to think of a situation, if you, you know, had a. Uh, a parent that had to go for, uh, a heart operation and you, under family leave, you had to take off a week to take care of them. That, this covered would kick in for that kind of, uh, application, but it will specifically kick in for COVID nineteen also.
But it's only, uh, eighty hours?
It's two weeks, yes.
Yeah, that's not very much.
Well, if, if it, if it's a COVID-related, you're either quarantined for fourteen days. Or you're hopefully, you know, recovered within fourteen days, so. Which is your eighty hours.
All right, yeah, anything else?
Nope, uh, oh, all right, okay.
Do you wanna motion on that, or are we going into exec, what, what's going?
I don't, I don't know, I didn't, wasn't sure what Charlie wanted to go in executive session for, was that one of them?
I, wha- well, um, not really, I think this could be picked up on our, uh, schedule for Monday. I mean, pardon me, for Wednesday, would that be correct, Tim?
Yes, that's actually what I thought we were doing, but.
Yeah.
We took, we took the real.
All right, uh, why don't we, uh, put this on for further discussion for our Wednesday meeting? Uh, we'll keep, there are some COVID, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, matters. I do wanna talk about an executive session tonight, but, uh, that could be put off until Wednesday. All right, anything else, David?
Uh, I just have another, um, uh, commendation, I guess, for Stop and Shop. Uh, I was informed on Friday that they're gonna be delivering, uh. Sixty cases of soups, chowder, and juice, uh, non-perishable items to the seniors center and to the seniors. Uh, was supposed to happen today, but I guess it's gonna happen tomorrow. So, uh, once again, I, I, I'm gonna be putting together a proclamation, uh, to Stop and Shop. I wanna have them, you know, aware of our appreciation and our thanks for doing that. and for all of the things that they've done as a great corporate citizen in the community uh in terms of taking care of the seniors and and taking care of the people in in Freetown. Uh, I also wanna do uh, say thank you to the highway guys uh who have gone over there and unloaded the stuff and were instrumental uh with the uh brown bag in last week as well as the employee volunteers and the council on aging. The council on aging, you know, did a super job pulling together a program on the fly uh to provide the brown bag when the brown bag couldn't be provided. So all of them are to be complimented and to be thanked for their activity. And we got two other, uh, actually a couple of things. One is I'm gonna have a department head meeting on Thursday at ten AM, just basically to, once again, uh, roundtable review of the issues that people are dealing with and and specifically with COVID. But uh, and as part of the roundtable, you know, it's a a forum where if there's something specific to their department that they feel um they need help with, you know, or some input from the group, we always encourage that. Uh, we generally have a topic, but at this point, uh, I think COVID nineteen has dominated all of our conversations. And it's basically just a a way to to get people together and to talk and find out what's happening in the, in their departments and how we up, we each can help each other. And finally, uh.
David, excuse me, uh, these meetings you're having, are they uh on this system?
They are, they're Zoom meetings, yeah, we're not doing anything internally anymore in terms of uh.
Could you put me on those meetings?
I can do that.
Okay.
And then we have our regular, uh, we're gonna have our everything COVID meeting on Wednesday just to talk about where we're at in terms of planning and different things that are happening and all the moving pieces there in terms of what we're learning from mass public health as well as, you know, an update from Derek on uh, you know, the cases that are in the community as well as, you know, other opportunities. We did get a grant for fifty-five hundred dollars, I mentioned that at the last meeting, uh, things like that. So just to keep an update as to, you know, things that the board sees are important and in in basically making sure all of, you know, the things that need to get done are getting done.
Yeah, I mean, if if you could, uh, would you include me in all those meetings?
The board meeting you're included in, the only other one would be the department head meeting.
Department head and the financial meeting?
The financial is tomorrow, yeah.
I'm not invited to that, I'd like to be.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, so any of these broad meetings I would like to listen in on?
All right, Tim, you, when you do, when you do the invites, could you just make sure George is included? That's all I got.
All right, uh, any other comments or questions?
No.
All right, uh, next item, number thirteen, is police station update.
I'll wait till Wednesday for that.
All right, uh, that sounds all right, fine. Number fourteen, uh, is scheduling of public hearing for class two motor vehicle dealers license submitted by Co-Pot Inc. Uh, Tim, do you have uh dates for us and how quickly we have to do this and so forth?
Uh, we actually do not have a limitation on that. So we, if the, if it's the pleasure of the board, I can send them a letter saying that we can, we're holding off on it or we can schedule a date, so it's completely up to the board.
I I I think that the, that, you know, given the current environment of how we're handling our meetings, I know, I'm not so sure that it, this type of environment would be, you know, would foster a real discuss, I don't know how you bring uh in a public hearing, how you bring citizen information into the meeting, whether it would be open to everybody, I, there there would be technical issues we'd have to address, I guess, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, it would be my recommendation that we ask them to put off until such a time that we can, you know, have a meeting in public and, you know, with people there and and do it the way it should be done.
Okay, any comment?
I think that's absolutely correct.
Any uh questions, Lisa? All right, I'm not hearing from Lisa.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, yeah, I I I can, you know, okay, um, any questions?
No, I think that uh we need to postpone this.
Yeah, okay, um, I would uh maybe say for certain, not uh any earlier than the April thirtieth, uh, which is the last day I hear from the federal government on uh, on, not that they would remove the restrictions, but that the restrictions are in place until April thirtieth. Anyone have a problem with putting that in the letter as a style?
I would recommend uh that we should do that, but also to say that uh until the restrictions are lifted, we can't hold a meeting. So it could be something like thirty days after the restrictions are lifted, we can schedule it.
Okay, all right, um, that sounds good to me too, I just.
Sounds good.
All right, all right, um, George, we just make that in the motion so we have it official.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule the public hearing for the class two motor vehicle dealers license thirty days or thereabouts after all of the restrictions are lifted statewide.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. One more item, I think, there.
I was just thinking about the whole idea of executive session, that's not really going to work, uh, Tim, uh, because this, the link is on the website.
You're correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The only way we could do it is if we set up a, an executive session, created a new meeting. Does that too much work or?
We don't really have the capabilities to kinda shut off people because the, the link has been published for people to join if they would like to.
So we could have it on Wednesday or?
We could have it on Wednesday, but uh, the open meeting law requires, still requires uh forty-eight hours notice. So we are outside that now, so we could do it on Thursday.
Right.
Well, you could do it as an emergency as part of that, you know.
We could do it as emergency if that, if it is an emergency situation, yes.
Well, I, I do believe it is an emergency situation, it's something that came up today. Um, I, as I say, I would like to speak to it tonight, but as you say, we can't speak to it right now. But um.
The only, the only problem is, is that if we did it now, um, it's still on a live feed.
Right.
So everybody that is watching that would be able to hear.
I understand that, so, yeah, all right.
That's a problem.
All right.
Can we do a closed, uh, closed telephone call only um meeting? Is that possible, Tim?
Yeah, it is, it would just have to be a separate meeting from this one that we're currently in right now.
Right, and it would have to be, I would think it had to be recorded because uh.
Well, it's, it's executive session, so it doesn't, it can't be recorded, actually.
Oh, all right, cuz I'm trying to think how, how, yeah, okay.
Yeah, which.
I'm just trying to think it through.
Square with the governor's order, but we can refer to council and see what, exactly how we're supposed to handle that, if they have any recommendations.
Okay, all right, good, hey, Tim. All right.
Okay.
So, so we're not doing this tonight, correct? We wouldn't be.
Well, we could if, if we wanted to do a, how quickly would it take for Tim to set up and send out three invites?
Not long at all.
All right, why don't we do that, get it done?
Okay, fine, yes, okay, all right. Item number fifteen was uh Selectmen's meeting for uh April seven, uh, twenty twenty. I believe, Tim, it's you, because you wanna go with a um more solid of a meeting, correct?
Uh, no, this actually uh goes with what I mentioned earlier. Uh, typically, we have our first meeting in April on the seventh or the day after the annual town election because we can't have a meeting on election night. But with no election night on Monday, we can have our meeting on Mondays as we usually, we do, usually do. And I did confirm that with Jackie, she said, yep, we are free to have our meeting.
Okay, um, so we, no, no motion or anything needed, correct?
No, no.
Okay, all right, uh, for item number sixteen, I'll turn it over to you, Lisa, it's personnel matter, reappointment.
So, um, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Stephen Chandler to the cultural council effective uh March twentieth, uh, twenty twenty until March twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
I'll make that motion, motion seconded.
Being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, with uh, with that being the end of the agenda, I'll accept the motion.
If I may, before we.
Yes, go ahead.
If we, before we go into executive session, how do we want to handle the board signing documents?
Uh, good point, actually had that on my list. We have, we actually, just as a, as a point of information, I did have that on my report, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't include it. Uh, we do, we, we got a uh, a bill in from Atri Collins that came in after the warrant had been created. Uh, I instructed Kim uh to uh process a separate warrant uh to make payment so that, you know, we process the payment and pay them on a timely basis, so there's no uh, as, you know, it's a goodwill kind of thing. Um, so we, we, we have a separate warrant that's gonna require two signatures. We also have two contracts, one of which is uh both police-related. One is for the office furniture, uh, I believe we have Charlie's signature on that. And the other one is uh uh vertical and communications telephone system. And I believe Charlie signed that one too, so we need.
Able to have Lisa sign those today, so that.
Oh, all right, don't worry about it.
I'm referring to basically everything else we did tonight, for example, this reappointment slip, the ambulance abatements, legal, the legal transfer would have been one, but if we're, we're waiting on that one. Just basically the tr, the uh, the general documents that we have from, on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, uh, does anyone have any discussion on that?
Well, uh, is it possible to do electronic signatures? You send us emails to sign, and I'm not sure how that works.
If you'd like, if that's the board's will, sure.
Where you like DocuSign?
Yeah.
Something along that, or even maybe you just si, send an email and just say, you know, okay, like.
I hear by authorize you.
That you've spoke of, that's how we handled it with uh Lisa, so.
Okay, all right, that sounds reasonable.
Sounds good.
Okay. Then I can just uh sign off an initial if, if needed.
All right, we'll, we'll work it that way.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll accept a uh motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do we go into?
Session or not?
You gotta make a motion to go into executive session, have a roll call.
But how, whoa, 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 I thought we couldn't go into executive sessions because this is open. How do we go into executive session?
We're declaring an emergency.
I'm sorry, what? Stop the live stream and then we can, uh, we are the only people here, if I'm not mistaken, yes, so we can, we can, I can just close down access to the meeting.
Oh, you did, oh, okay.
I just have to shut.
All right.
So after you guys do the motion, I'll just need you to wait for a minute so I can stop the live stream, we can say goodbye to YouTube and we'll be good to go.
All right, point for you, Tim, I, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session. Uh, do I make the motion or do I ask for a motion to adjourn now? Or would be after the, will, will we have to come back after the executive session, how would that be?
We'll just say not to return too.
Right, it'll just be like, as if it was posted on the agenda.
All right, all right, fine, okay, all right, then, um, um, I'll accept the motion to, uh, go into executive session to speak um of uh personnel matters.
Motion made.
That's not the proper intention.
What is, what is it?
Uh, well, if, yeah, Tim, if you have the proper intention there, please read it.
It's just out of reach. Is it about an individual or collective bargaining?
Uh, it's about an individual.
Well, the problem is, if there's an individual, you gotta give them notice that you're gonna. You can't speak about indiv.
Yeah, if it's, if it's an individual, we can't do that tonight, we'll have to wait for that.
All right, then, all right, well, we, we won't, if we do not mention a name, is that going to cover it?
Uh, unless we're talking about a union at a hall, as a whole, that is the only way we could be able to do this.
Is this regarding the town offices?
Yes, it is.
All right.
I would think if there's any questions about it, we should probably wait until we get a better handle on things. That would be my recommendation, anyway.
Well, you know, but, but my, okay, go ahead, George.
What is the subject?
All right, it, it's about uh the operations at the town office. But, I mean, personally, I mean, I don't, you know, we like to go by the rules as much as we can. But these are exemplary times when, um, you know, things have come up, something has come up here that I think we need to discuss, it deals, it's, I think, a very serious thing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, you know, let them, let the Attorney General come after us, so to speak. I, I don't mean to be brash or anything, but.
Were you on the live, were you still on live or no?
Yes, yes, I, and I don't, I don't mind that, I don't mind that, uh.
I, 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 I can't, why don't we, why don't we, David, why don't you talk to David about it? Why doesn't everybody read their email? And why don't we set up an emergency executive session for tomorrow morning?
Okay, well.
With whatever interpretation, like whatever we feel is the right way to do it. I don't, I don't, because we're gonna be talking about. George, you had an email today, so you might wanna read that email first.
No.
No, not now, you can read it later.
All right.
All right.
Does it, no, Ken, yeah, I, I have no problem, but if you wanna do that, um, you just gotta get a posting to the town clerk.
How I make the motion to continue this meeting till tomorrow?
All right, what time?
Can I do that, Tim?
I don't think that qualifies, but if you want to, if that's the pleasure of the board, that's the pleasure of the board.
No. Cuz this, we gotta be very careful about this one.
Yes.
Yes, and, yeah, I, I don't think.
I know.
I mean, it, it, I mean, it's, it's enforcing the law ridiculously if someone wants to uh, oh, take an issue with this. Uh, it'd be like, uh, I, I think, go, going one mile over the speed limit and being uh fined a hundred dollars. Next, that would be uh, oh, uh, maybe a good example, I, I, I have no problem with, you know. This is a situation we've gotta deal with.
Well, we, we, if, we might know more tomorrow, I guess, too, that's the other part of it.
Okay, um.
I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned here, and I think the action, you know, we need to take an action tonight, but I, I don't know.
I, I would agree, I would agree with that, if we could just, I, I just think we need to talk about it and decide, you know, specifically. I, I just.
Yeah.
I, again, just read your email and um, can we do a conference call tomorrow?
We could do that, or.
Are you going in tomorrow? No.
No, I.
Yeah, that's, gi, given that situation, I, I'm not so sure that.
I don't think anyone should go in, yeah, in there.
Into town hall?
Right.
I, you guys must know more than me, so I, I'm, I don't know. I read my email, it didn't have anything to do with town hall, so I don't know.
Well, that, that's why it's such a uh, a new item and a new issue.
What is it regarding? I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Right.
If it's an executive session topic, I'm assuming it's a private matter.
Right, so.
I can talk to you individually, I guess, that would be one way.
Okay.
Do you wanna call me now, explain the situation?
Should I make an appointment?
No, I'm here, I got my phone.
All right.
Now, Lisa, you're gonna call David, talk to him?
I'll call him now.
Okay, David, can you call me after you finish with Lisa?
I will, okay.
Just have to be careful, we're not gonna be polling the members here.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
I just don't understand this, I don't.
Just wanna let them know what the circumstances are, then they can make a decision.
I wanna know.
Yeah.
I just wanna know what's going on, more than, more than my email this afternoon.
All right, I didn't, I didn't wanna put anything in writing that would be inviolating. All right, I didn't, I didn't wanna put anything in writing that would be in violation of anything, so.
And the thing is.
Go ahead.
Okay, go, and and the thing is, it actually, yes, there are two issues. Uh, but, all right, um, I'll accept the motion to adjourn then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all right.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all right.
Bye, YouTube, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.